The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin around 7:00 p.m. And now we have public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. And this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Loja Soriano. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Good evening. Si buenas noches. Esta es una reunión de la mesa de educación del Distrito Escolar Unificado del Valle de Napa. La reunión de hoy va a tener servicios de interpretación en español. Para poder acceder al canal de interpretación, en un momento, van a ver en la parte baja de su pantalla en Zoom el símbolo del globo terráqueo. Por favor, hagan clic ahí, y bajo Language Interpretation, o Interpretación de Idioma, elija Spanish o Español. Si está en Zoom, en un celular o tableta, busquen tres puntitos que dicen More, o más, en la pantalla de Zoom, y haga clic ahí para activar la función de interpretación en español. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member Grayden?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Marias?
Present.
Forum present. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. And E1, report on closed session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
I do. Item D2A, personnel. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendation effective the 2024-2025 school year. On a motion by Trustee Gracia and second by Trustee Hart, the board voted 7-0 to appoint Martha Martín to the position of interim principal at McPherson Elementary. The votes were: Trustee Water, aye. Trustee Riser, aye. Trustee Chu, aye. Trustee Gracia, aye. Trustee Jankowicz, aye. Trustee Hart, aye. And Trustee Gonzales Marias, aye.
Thank you, Trustee Chu and President Water. Ms. Martinez isn't able to be here this evening, but she will be attending the October board meeting, and we'll address the board then. So, thank you. Congratulations to her.
Yes. And now, E2, we will have the flag salute, and it's a social studies teacher, Troy Giddings of Napa High School, will lead us in the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. And this meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. And now, we need the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, hang on. So, do we have any public comment on the agenda?
You don't take public comment?
I don't? I wrote it down there. Sorry. Okay. Fine. Okay, so.
You had a first from Trustee.
I got a first from, look, I'm just trying to have public comments and everything, okay? I have a first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart, as usual, okay? And student board rep?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Nope. Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you. And approval of minutes? There are no minutes to be approved at this meeting? And recognition of visitors and employee organizations? We do have some distinguished visitors in attendance?
We do. I'd like to invite the leadership of the Napa Valley Educators Association. I know is here this evening. Ms. Deb St. Clair and Troy Giddings.
Good evening, President Waters. Justin, thank you for having us. Sorry. Good evening, President Waters. Trustees, thank you for having us here tonight. Just a real quick update, a few things that Troy and I have to share. We are proud of the strong relationship and collaboration between NVA and NVUSD, through which our formula generated the 2% ongoing salary increase. And in addition, through intentional budgetary planning and forethought, the additional 2% one-time payment is greatly appreciated to help relieve inflationary and health care pressures. So, thank you for that. We also do want to acknowledge the work we have this year with our contract negotiations, and we are looking forward to all of us being committed to continuing to use interest-based problem solving through that process. And then finally, just kind of as a quick preview, in the next board meeting, Troy and I will present to the board data that was collected through our listening tour last spring. Exec Board, or the NVA leadership, we were able to, we received a grant from CTA to get 20 release days so that NVA leadership could go to every site and listen to teachers. Our goal was to speak with every teacher at every site, collecting data from each one. And we'll be reviewing that data with you, what we've found, and how that has led to some changes within our organization, and then also looking at how we use that data for contract negotiations as well. So, we've had a great start to this school year. We'll see you again October 10th, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have my favorite part of the agenda, recognition of Students of the Month. First, we will have Vintage High School for September, Madeline Chu, October, Valentina Rango.
Principal Hutchinson.
Principal Jessica Hutchinson.
Good evening, Dr. Masetti, President Water, and Board of Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our Vintage High students this evening. I'm very proud to introduce and recognize Madeline Chu. Madeline is a Vintage High senior who has excelled in all areas. She has taken rigorous course offerings and demonstrated academic excellence since day one at Vintage. And we are proud and happy to share that Madeline is a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. We hope she makes it further, too. Madeline has also fit in band and orchestra in her course schedule for all four years and is currently the Vintage High School Assistant Drum Major. Outside of Vintage, she plays for the Napa Valley Youth Symphony. And highlights of Madeline's extracurricular activities include participating in cross-country for all four years, serving as co-president of the Poetry Club, president of CSF, and vice president of Teens for Change. Last year, Madeline worked with a group for the Napa Schools Climate Action, and she passed a resolution with NVUSD for climate restoration. You may remember her from the board meeting last April. And Congressman Mike Thompson named this group his 2024 Napa County Climate Crisis Champions. And we have a congressional record statement from him in our office recognizing the good work that Madeline and this group did. Madeline was also a state finalist for the National Poetry Out Loud competition last year as well. And this year, Madeline is working with the Youth Civic Leaders and the League of Women's Voters, I believe that involves President Cindy Water as well, to encourage youth civic engagement. And after she graduates, Madeline would like to continue to study music and environmental sciences. And we know she will have many future successes, and we congratulate Madeline.
Good evening, everyone. I would first like to thank Dr. Masetti and the Board of Education for acknowledging me as one of NVUSD's Board of Education Students of the Month for this month of September. I would also like to extend a thank you to some of the teachers who have been instrumental in helping shape who I am as a student and person today, specifically English teachers Mrs. Lamont and Mr. Anderson, AP Chemistry Teacher Mrs. Castelazzo, and AP Environmental Science Teacher Mr. Wagner. They have all led to my immense growth, both academically and personally, and I'm eternally grateful for all of their encouragement throughout these last four years of high school. Over these past years at Vintage, I've had the opportunity to do so much and immerse myself in so many different wonderful communities on campus. I've played in and organized concerts with the instrumental music department, expressed myself with fellow members of the Poetry Club, and worked to make campus a greener, more sustainable place as part of Teens for Change. My high school career would not be complete without any of the activities and communities that I've been so lucky to be a part of. Looking forward, I plan to pursue my interests in both music and environmental science at a four-year college or university. As I move through the application process this fall, I'd like to extend an immense thank you to my family for always being patient with me and being patient throughout these next few months. They have always been my greatest supporters, and I know they'll continue to love and encourage me wherever I end up in life. So, thank you again to Dr. Masetti and the Board for honoring me, and I hope everybody has a lovely evening. Thank you.
All right. And the next student that I'm very proud to introduce and recognize is Valentina Rango, a senior at Vintage High School who has excelled in many areas. He has taken multiple AP classes. And a point worth noting is that Valentina has taken two language pathways in high school and is now taking AP Spanish literature as well as AP French. It takes a lot of work and commitment to fit both of these pathways into a student's schedule. And last year, Valentina's teacher, Mrs. Adai, nominated him for an opportunity to travel abroad. And he was selected for this program and earned a scholarship to participate in the CIEE Global Navigator High School Summer Abroad Program. And over the summer, Valentina spent three weeks in Singapore learning about global entrepreneurship. At Vintage, Valentina has been in leadership for two years and is serving as vice president of his junior class, excuse me, served as vice president of his junior class and is now president of his senior class. And he is currently participating in his fourth year of cross-country and will also do track and field this spring. We appreciate Valentina's academic excellence, leadership, participation, enthusiasm, and all of his contributions to our crusher community. Valentina is interested in studying aviation after he graduates, and we look forward to the rest of his senior year with us at Vintage and know he will continue to have future success after he graduates. Congratulations to Valentina. But before I finish, I just want to make one more point that I'd like to share. It's not a major reason that Valentina and Maddie were selected for the recognition this evening for Board Student of the Month, but they were both homecoming court candidates together for cross-country recently. And it was really fun to watch them participate together and their enthusiasm throughout homecoming week. So, congratulations, Valentina.
Good evening. I am honored to be here today to receive such a wonderful recognition from the NVUSD Board of Education and Dr. Masetti. My gratitude for this acknowledgement goes out to both the NVUSD Board and Dr. Masetti and to many of my teachers who have contributed to this moment. Starting off, I want to thank Mrs. Skidos, Madame Medei, Mrs. Hernandez from Vintage High School, as well as my fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Morton, from Willow Elementary. All of these amazing educators have a warm, radiant heart that shows their students how much they care about them. And each of them have their own unique spin in their way of teaching and a unique personality that is one in a million. I'm grateful for the times they have all made me laugh and how to put up with my constant questions. Throughout my last few years at Vintage High School, I've been able to grow as both a student and athlete, making new friends each year as I go, and getting involved with different classes and clubs, such as Culinary, Avid, Drama, and French Club, and later finding my place in leadership. I am also happy to be able to say that the Vintage High School cross-country team and track team have helped me to become a much faster runner with cross-country, especially bringing me and my teammates closer together as a family, as I have lived my best moments with them, especially winning Vival as a team. I've experienced great moments on the cross-country team, making others laugh and vice versa, and learning to stay motivated and resilient during the highs and lows, which have applied to my own learning when it comes to being in my classes, both AP and honors courses, facing the hills both on the course and in class. I'm lucky enough to have Coach Shari and her inspirational words to guide me throughout all of these years. My exploration in all of these programs at Vintage High School have helped me find what it is I want to pursue in the future, whether in aviation and engineering or in the medical field. In the future, I hope to attend UCLA, which is my dream school, or another four-year university to pursue one of these career paths. Before I go, I'd like to say thank you to all of my family, with honorable mentions to my grandparents for always believing in me and allowing me to have all of these opportunities. And to my number-one supporter who is always by my side, whether rain and shine, literally if we're talking about cross-country, my mom. Thank you once again to the NVUSD Board of Education and Dr. Masetti for shining a light on my high school career tonight. And I appreciate the efforts in striving to always better the student experience with an emphasis on what will help each student succeed. Thank you.
All right. And next, New Tech High School's Principal Dev will present Students of the Month, and they are Jayden Valandingham and Abner Silva Toscano.
Good evening, NVUSD Board of Trustees, President Water, and Dr. Masetti. Congratulations to the Student of the Month winners at Vintage High School. The first month of the school year has been very exciting for Penguin Nation. The first cohort of our new early college program has arrived, and our six dorm world college classes are under their second month of instruction. We have our first few ASB events of the year coming up, including a movie night tomorrow evening. I have the pleasure this evening to recognize two amazing students. Our September and October-focused value for Student of the Month nominees is connected to the theme of inquiry. Students were nominated based on possessing a natural curiosity and being driven to explore the world around them. These students develop inquiring minds, ask questions, conduct research, and take initiative in their learning journey. Our two winners this evening embody this value of inquiry. Our Student of the Month for September is 11th grader Jayden Valandingham. Jayden has been incredibly motivated this year, which has inspired his friends. He is a fierce advocate for himself and his peers. Jayden is a kind, respectful, and intelligent young man. He asks thoughtful questions, and when he investigates things, he goes above and beyond what teachers are looking for. He recently presented to the entire senior class about the importance of voting. Jayden, you're an exemplary Penguin and bring so much to our collaborative culture. Congratulations.
Is he online?
It looks like he's having issues with his microphone.
Principal Dev, do you want to go to the next student? See if we can see if Jayden can give him a little bit of time to see if he can fix it? Yep.
Jayden, go ahead and just share in the chat if you're able to get your microphone figured out. But yes, I will go on to our Student of the Month for October. And so, congratulations to Senior Abner Silva Toscano. Abner's teachers share that he has an unceasing energy to not only share his passions, but bring others into the conversation about those passions. He's the kind of student who can play devil's advocate in order to help his peers support the reason they hold their own beliefs, and in doing so, helps all he interacts with communicate better. Abner is a leader on campus who has taken charge to reinvigorate the Speech and Debate Club this school year. Abner, the New Tech staff is very proud of you and know your future is bright. And Abner has prepared a few words to share with the board.
Hey, this is Abner Silva Toscano. And, and, thank you, truly. Me being a Student of the Month of New Tech is something that I would have never thought I would ever be just a few years ago. Beforehand, I wasn't even the type that would get involved in extracurriculars or take active joy and pride in their schoolwork. However, over the past two years, I have been more and more inspired by the New Tech staff and fellow students to really push myself to do awesome things, whether it be starting and being the president of my school's debate club and helping those find their voice, just as I'm finding mine, or joining an advocacy group and advocating and helping pass a resolution through this same Board of Education. My time at New Tech has formed a lot of traits that I consider an essential part of me. My deep love of reading, writing, and public speaking, and a genuine love for education. In fact, after high school, I want to pursue further education, to be a teacher, a professor, no less. So, seeing my work be recognized is truly encouraging. I would also like to mention just a few of my teachers who have played a special role in finding my success. Ms. Godfrey, my graphic design teacher, who has helped me explore my creative and artistic side and gave me many opportunities to be a leader amongst my fellow students. And Mr. Gaines, my English teacher, who further solidified my love for reading and is the advisor for my debate club, thus allowing me to flourish in my ability to speak with confidence. So, thank you, truly, to the New Tech staff, to the NVUSD School District, and of course, my family that worked so very hard to give me opportunities that they themselves never had.
That was wonderful. Thank you. And Principal Dev, is Jayden online?
I haven't seen a chat from him yet. Jayden, are you able to access your microphone? I see him trying to go off of mute, but it looks like it's working.
Principal Dev, if we're not able to get the microphone to work, maybe he can send his statement to the board, and I can distribute it to the Board of Trustees for him on his behalf.
Absolutely. We can record it tomorrow, yeah. And I know Jayden was very excited to be here tonight and his families as well. So, congratulations, Jayden, and the Board of Trustees. Have a good evening.
Public comments on non-agenda items. And Trustee Chu, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
We did not receive any public comments on non-agenda items. Submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you. But we do have public comments here. We have some, three people have filled out public comments. And number one is Sophie, is it? Bourgaud, okay. Yeah, just come on up to the microphone. Make sure it's turned on.
Good evening. Hello. First of all, I want to introduce myself. My name is Sophie Bourgeau. I'm an advocate for children, young adults with disability. I am also part of the Napa Valley Unified School District Special Ed Parent Advisor Committee representing American Canyon High School. And my public comment regarding this one is it came to my attention that there's some issue with transportation at transition at the American Canyon High School. These kids work really hard to go from point A to point B every Tuesdays and Thursdays to go to Napa Valley College for their APE class. And they're very excited. The problem with this is transportation. From American Canyon High School to the drop-off location to get to the 11, number 11 bus near Taco Bell in American Canyon. So, when that transportation keeps delaying, and then they're not able to go to their class from 9:30 to 10:30 only at Napa Valley College. So, that's a domino effect. These kids are looking forward to get from point A to point B, but not able to because of that busing situation. Can I suggest that since they are part of the school district, that they can have at least transportation through busing from American Canyon to that bus stop for them to be able to go to their destination without a problem? Because apparently today, there was an issue and like a problem with the bus driver and the staff not getting eye-to-eye from American Canyon. They call it the duck, but I don't know why they call it the duck. But that's the only issue, and hopefully it will be addressed. And I'm the only one that feels like advocating for these kids. Well, they're not kids anymore. They're young adults, but to me, they are like kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the name? Ms. Bourgeau, how do you pronounce it?
Bourgeau.
Bourgeau. Well, can you provide your information to Assistant Superintendent Rob Mingle? Oh, here it is, yes. You did put all of it here. Okay, we will follow up with you. Thank you so much. Do you want to record this and get it to transportation?
Okay, great. Thank you. And our next speaker is Carla Gomez Palayo on the Legacy Youth Project.
Hello. My name is Carla Gomez Palayo, and this alley has raised me since I moved here in 1994. After graduating from UC Berkeley with Ethnic Studies and Chicano Studies degrees, I became the type of educator that I needed growing up in the school district of the Legacy Youth Project. I was an at-promised student like those that I taught my former schools. LYP prepared me to be a second-year doctoral student today at the Chicano Studies Department at UC Santa Barbara. After nearly a decade of transformative success for historically marginalized students, NVUSD, many of you here, violently dismantled our nationally-recognized Ethnic Studies program at the peak of a global pandemic when our students needed us most in 2020. Without LYP as a lifeline, it was clear then and now, as evident in the Napa County Grand Jury Report findings, that students would seek other ways of belongings, much like I did as a young person. NVUSD's decision to close, to end LYP and close Harvest Middle School deepened at-risk conditions for students and their families, further perpetuating the prison-to-school pipeline. It is unacceptable that NVUSD continues using rhetoric that devalues students' lives to justify their divestment from our award-winning program. LYP serves brilliant Black, Indigenous, Latina, and white working-class students who experience extreme hardship. Saving the lives of the student demographic with a program like LYP is worth every single investment and effort, and anything else is irresponsible. Right now, as we speak, there's an ongoing investigation for a shooting that took place blocks away. The removal of LYP is a prime example of settler colonial logic. I'll say that one more time in case you're not familiar, settler colonial logic. When Dr. Musetti arrived in our community, our grassroots Ethnic Studies Program was thriving, and we co-developed a long-term sustainability plan. After two years, she proceeded to abruptly dismantle our program, push out highly qualified local Ethnic Studies educators like they do our students, bringing outside consultants to tell us what we need and claim that she can create a better program. LYP thrived because it was created by us and for us through extensive collaborative efforts to meet the needs of historically marginalized students, and many of you are present in the room who are part of that. The fact that we did not become a nonprofit organization has nothing to do with the effectiveness or legitimacy of our program, which was physically sponsored by the Napa Valley Education Foundation. Instead of initiating a resorted justice process for the wrongdoing with LYP, NVUSD has hired multiple outside consultants who, like some of you, will never understand the heartbeat of our community as we do. It's noteworthy that some consultants didn't want to partner with y'all because of how you treated us. For example, NVUSD contracted Dr. Victor Rios, who provided 19-point hours of training for $75,000, and then contracted the National Go Brothers Network to train a maximum of 30 people for $42,000. While NVUSD did not pay for the latter, they knew how to find money to finance their priorities. The average salary of a LYP teacher was $41,000 for an entire year. Not only did y'all exploit our labor, but you also utilized thousands of taxpayer resources and legal fees and public relation costs to publicly discredit our ethical hard work using false information. We are teachers of color, majority women, and first generation, and we are fortunate to have renowned Ethnic Studies experts like my colleagues and myself, I'm almost done, in our community with over seven years of combined Ethnic Studies training who saved lives for a thousand, I mean, for nearly a decade. Our students, who've been my greatest teachers and inform my pedagogy at a doctoral level, are worth every single investment. And any student, why?
Cause, since the end of my career is on your
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gina Clark, but who I am is not important. Why I'm here is. I would like you guys all just to take a moment and imagine that you're walking into a job for the first time, and you're so excited to be there, and your colleagues make fun of the outfit that you're wearing. Now I want you to imagine that you've been there for a while, and they start throwing office supplies at your head. Now I want you to think that you're going to the bathroom and you're being sexually assaulted by your coworker. And the following, you finally get a new manager, a new boss, and now you're getting punched in the face. And instead of reacting, you go and you tell somebody, and nobody's doing anything about it. That is what is happening to the children in our school district. They are being sexually assaulted, they are being physically assaulted, and our schools are not responding. Our schools are not doing anything to keep them safe. I have talked with several parents, and racism is a thing in the schools. One child had swastika drawn for them. And when they questioned it, well, the child didn't know that she was German. She's not German, but it doesn't matter. Racism should not be allowed in our schools, and it's continuing. When you have a child going to school and they're being called the N-word, it's not okay. When you go to the school officials and you say, "What can we do? She's fine here, we're all brown." How is that supposed to make our children feel? I would implore you to review the district policy on bullying and harassment and assault, and ensure that the consequences that we are handing out to the children are effective, because this social-emotional toolbox is not doing it. Because I'm sorry, if a little kid comes and punches me in the face, and the principal brings us in and he says sorry, and the very next day, he's throwing rocks at my head, it didn't make a difference. Our children are not safe. Our children are not being properly supervised at school. And I would also ask that this be put on the agenda for further discussion of how we can really bring anti-bullying into our schools and how we can actually protect our children. Because, you know, the Napa Register just did an article not that long ago about the violence and the, how it's not safe in our middle schools. It's not safe in our elementary schools. The children are learning it there. The children are not being held accountable for their actions, and neither is our administration in those schools.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, can you please meet with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Ready so she can get information regarding the incidents in the school that you're referring to?
We have, we have come to the district and nothing is changing. We have met with district officials, we've met with the principals, we've met with the teachers, nothing is changing. We keep being told our hands are tied.
Okay, have you met with Dr. Ready?
No.
Okay, please, if you could provide her your information, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And we have Cameron Jones.
Good evening to you all. My name's Cameron Jones, and just want to say thank you guys for what you do for serving. I know it's not easy, but thank you for what you do. Thank you for your service. Most of all, I have to say is more question-based, it's not so much, I have a complaint. This is my first time doing this and being here, so I just want to understand how things operate as I am a voter, I am a citizen, and so on and so forth. In your, hold on a second. In this welcome sheet, it says, "Being duly elected representatives of the community, the board is responsible to the state government and local citizens for the education of pupils from kindergarten through adult education." And I guess my question to you guys is, have you found that policies given by the state of California or even our federal government are possible causes to why our city is shrinking, to why our school population is shrinking? Has that been something that has been considered? And if it hasn't, why not? If it has, could you please direct me to the findings and the methods of what you found? And if you have found that policies, the government outside of our local government have issued that are impacting our city, what does your role become as those who are the local elected officials, who are basically the closest thing to government that will experience outside of Sacramento and obviously with the federal government? And just to give you an understanding where this is coming from is this. I came to Napa from El Grove High School, and this city is nothing like anything I've ever seen before. It's one of the most loving communities I've ever been a part of. It embraced me when I came here. I did come from a school with a heavy sense of racism. I'm talking about race riots, not just names. So coming here, there was some apprehension. But when I arrived here, I was fully embraced, me and my brother, and, and we love that about this city. There is a policy that came down through the state that won't allow children to go to school because they're not vaccinated. That's all four of my children. They can't attend Napa High School, they can't attend any community school in this area. And we have an issue. We have an issue that we're losing population. And some of that loss is not just because of cost, it's also because of policy. So my question to you as our champions, what can you do? What will you do? Or will you not do anything? Because I'm living here, ready to support and engage in this, but I can't because of where I stand. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Okay. And that's it for public comments. Do we have any, do we have any online public comments?
There is no public comment.
Thank you. All righty. Well, now we're moving over to reports, and we'll start with the Board of Education and Student Board Representative. How about Riley, Student Representative Riley Grayden?
Good evening, everyone. Since we last spoke, our long-awaited homecoming dance finally took place on September 14th. It was a great success, and everyone had an amazing time. As being a part of the committee who planned the dance, we had the idea to utilize our school's upper gym as a food stash lounge area and coined it Tiana's Place, as in the movie since the theme was Princess and the Frog. It was a great solution to the heat and space issues we had last year, and overall enhanced the quality of the dance. In leadership, we are relieved that homecoming season has ended, and we have begun to prepare planning for our new events. We are currently working in our October committees. One thing I wanted to share about leadership is that we have reinvented our class flow. On Mondays, they're now called Making Monday Meaningful. We now introduce a new leadership theme and activity for the week. This week's theme is reliability. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we continue on our committee work, planning amazing events for our school. On Wednesdays, we now have created a space for weekly journal time. Mrs. Harris, our leadership teacher, has introduced a kind journal with different kindness activities for us to do every week. In this journal, we are given a morning task to start the day and an evening task to reflect on everything that we did that day in regards to kindness. This, yesterday's kindness journal prompt was write down one thing you love about your past self, one thing you love about your present self, and one thing you love about your future self. Put it somewhere you see daily. In this journal, okay, on Wednesdays, we also have student-led leadership-focused lessons for the particular theme or skill for that week. This week, ASB was responsible for the lesson. We played Telephone and Human Knot, which is a game where you get in a circle, you grab the person's hand across from you, and you have to try and untangle yourselves without breaking hands. And finally, on Fridays, we have Fun Fridays where students get to lead any activity of their desire. Last year, when my team was responsible for Fun Friday, we did cookie decorating with riddles to get to an image of Peppa Pig. In school, one important thing that our expository English classes are working on is college essays, or if not college, letters of introduction for entering the workforce. It does definitely bring a time of reflection and a little sadness as we get ready to prepare for college application season. At Vantage, they had their big game, which was NASCAR-themed. And that concludes my board report.
Thank you. And Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Thank you, President Water. Yeah, just a few activities that are part of my regular kind of scheduled duties as board member. I appreciated the welcome back check-in with Dr. Musetti, with our superintendent. Those are always great one-on-one opportunities to be able to just connect, right? In regards to some of the items we just wanted to discuss. And then participated at the first Facilities and Technology Committee meeting, really dove into a little bit more of details that was presented at the board meeting in regards to our facilities, big topic these days. Always technology, but facilities is the chat of our, one of our school major needs. So really helpful for me to be able to have that kind of information and as I'm meeting with people who are also having this as top of mind, relay and share more of those details of the dire situation of our, of our facilities. And then lastly, I'm here today and yeah, looking forward to our next meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hart.
I'm sorry, Trustee Water. One last thing I wanted to say, I just also wanted to just briefly recognize the passing of Brad Anorado. Who worked for Congressman Thompson. I'm sure you were going to say something around that, but he was a dear friend of mine. And it's one of those folks that go under the radar as a public servant. I think it was at the end of the day, like 35 years dedicated and one of the most genuine, straightforward, and just lots of conversations with him about school districts. You know, he worked for Congressman Thompson, but he always had a pulse of what was going on. And so I always appreciated his, his interest around that and just, just really sad about that news of losing someone who has dedicated pretty much almost an entire life for public serving in our, in our community, helping create the Napa that we know. So just wanted to remember.
Thank you. Well said. Trustee Hart.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to acknowledge that we have entered now into our National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is acknowledged annually between September 15th and October 15th, and is recognizing the contributions and influence of Hispanic Americans to the nation's achievements, culture, and history. And I feel this is especially true for us here in the Napa Valley. So I want to acknowledge those of us that are part of that, and those that aren't can acknowledge as well. On the 18th of this month, I sat in on the Curriculum and Student Support Committee. On the 20th, I was able to attend the Pueblo Vista Harvest Festival featuring the world-famous salsa contest, which was super fun. So encourage you to come check that out if you get a chance. It's definitely worth stopping by. On the 24th, the Pueblo Vista Parent Faculty Club held a meeting that I attended. The 25th, so yesterday, I worked on some CSBA Golden Bell Award local validation for NCOE, and then also attended the Special Board Meeting for Candidate Orientation here in the Wapo Room, and then have met with various constituents throughout my area. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Hart. Trustee Jacobowitz.
Well, happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and I will not say anything else. You did a great job. I continue to participate on the Facilities Assessment Committee. We met on the 13th and the 20th. I attended via Zoom an event and local elections and city-county measure meeting. I attended again via Zoom speaker training for the upcoming Annual Education Conference. I attended the ribbon cutting for the New Blue Oak Middle School, representing NVUSD's collaborative relationship with other educational institutions. I attended via Zoom a portion of the San Francisco Unified School Board Meeting, and I attended the School Board Candidate Orientation Special Board Meeting last evening with my peers. We had four candidates join us as candidates for Board of Trustees for NVUSD. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Jacobowitz. And Trustee Garcia.
Sure. On the 13th, I attended the Vintage High School Football Game, and then on the 17th, Facilities and Technology Committee Meeting. 18th was then Curriculum. The 20th, I had a CSBA Legislative Action Meeting. Also on the 20th, another Vintage High School Football Game, and then on the 25th, the Special Candidate Board Meeting. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia. Trustee Chu.
So I haven't been here for a little over a month, so this is going to be a little lengthy. On August 27th, I attended the ACMS Back to School Night. It was great to reconnect with families after summer. On September 3rd, I attended the ACHS Back to School Night. Similar, good feelings about getting onto campus. On the 6th, that Friday, I had a meeting with ACHS Principal Karen Hatton, just to discuss how her new, how she's doing in her new role. And right after that, I had a meeting with Mr. Julie Bordes from the district on strategic plans, strategy number 11, creating board engagement and communication strategy. And that was really nice. Looking forward to all the plans that we will implement soon to, to talk about governance. And then that evening, I was lucky enough to go and attend ACHS's football games with Principal Hatton, Dr. Musetti, NCOE trustee Cindy Beederman, Sheriff Oscar Ortiz, and our new parent-community liaison, Karina Servanti. It was a great day to welcome Principal Hatton because the varsity football team won. So that's always fun. Yeah. On September 10th, I attended the ACMS PTO meeting as a parent and also as a trustee. On September 17th, I had a Facilities and Technology Committee Meeting along with a couple of my fellow trustees. And then that evening, I attended 11th Grade Parent Night. That's always eye-opening about what, you know, our juniors are looking forward to this year. Got to get those grades if they're wanting to go on to college. And then really great to hear about other options that are available for our students if that of college is not their next step also. On September 18th, I had a welcome back check-in with Dr. Musetti. And that evening, I actually attended the Measure A2 Citizen Bond Oversight Committee Meeting. That's always great to hear community about their, their views of how we're doing with the bond, and so far, so good. I think they're very happy with the direction and that the promises are being kept with what we're doing. And this past Monday, I attended the Selpa Community Advisory Committee Meeting, which I'll report on later. On Wednesday, I had, I attended the Coffee with the Principal at ACHS with Principal Hatton, and the room was pretty full with a lot of parents that wanted to meet her. It's all, she laid out her plans for the year and how she's engaging with the community more, and it's just wonderful to actually have a coffee with the principal at ACHS. And then, of course, I also attended the School Board Candidate Orientation last night. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Chu. And Trustee Risar.
Yes, thank you. Since our last meeting, regular business meeting, I attended on September 18th, the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council's first conference focused on suicide prevention. It was called Hope Beyond Darkness: Uniteding for Suicide Prevention. I was sort of wearing two hats. I was there I was there as a trustee with a real interest on the youth mental health aspect, and there was a really interesting panel given, or not a panel, but a presentation given by a counselor that was just very informative. You know, it's all very difficult and heavy content, and the keynote speaker was just a really inspiring woman with a counseling degree and also a pastor, but who shared her own story of surviving her own suicide attempts and her own journey of mental health and recovery. And I just want to give a shout-out in particular to Jenny Olson from Mentis, and also she's a founding, or a member of the Suicide Prevention Council for Napa Valley, for everything that she does in our community to raise awareness and to reduce the stigma, and to just get information and support to the people who need it. So I was really grateful to be there. I was also there in my capacity as a volunteer with Moms Demand Action, giving away free gun locks and educating people about the importance of safe storage because the majority of deaths by gun are actually suicides. And one more comment on that, because it is also Suicide Prevention Month still in September, I saw on the news this morning a report that we are still in, you know, record-high suicide rates nationally. There were almost 50,000 deaths by suicide last year, which translates to one suicide every 11 minutes. So I encourage anyone who's listening in our community to look for opportunities to take the QPR training, Question, Persuade, Refer. That was also a session offered in the afternoon of the conference. It's a very brief and powerful training to sort of empower people to, to ask and to reach out if someone is struggling. So on that day, I then, I missed the afternoon session of the, of the conference because I came back here for the Curriculum and Student Support Committee Meeting, which is always very interesting and informative. I was excited to hear the beginning layout of Dr. Reddy's instructional framework work. So great things going on in our instructional division. And then after that, I was very involved getting my daughter to college, and so, other than some community outreach by email, that covers my report, except for the Candidate Orientation Special Board Meeting last night.
Thank you, trustee Reiser. Well, let's see, I did my usual, oh, community communication over the last two weeks. Last week, let's see, the 17th was National Voter Registration Day, so I celebrated by going to Valley Oak High School and registering some voters. It's a nonpartisan effort, which one of the students of the month referred to. And that night, I also went to the Napa City Council Meeting and spoke, and the next day, I went to Camille Creek and registered voters. And, and then this week, this past Tuesday, I stopped off at the Board of Supervisors, and I listened to them talk about the Bicycle Coalition, you know, they presented to us, and the several, a couple of the supervisors, you know, were worried about infrastructure and students, you know, being able to ride bicycles to school. And I also listened to the, the Health and Human Services Director and someone from mental health speak about services in the county, and they brought up our wellness centers at Napa High School and talked about what a superior job we were doing, and that made me feel good. And then I ran off to a couple of schools and dropped off some books for teachers. And yesterday, I had my regular meeting with Dr. Masetti, and last night was our candidates' orientation information. It was, you know, really interesting to meet the people who are running for office and hear them, and I'm sure they thought it was interesting to learn how big the job is. And, and I will close by saying, yes, I too will miss Brad Anorado, his humor, his experience, his great stories, wonderful person. And this is banned books week, so I celebrated by reading chapters one and two of The Scarlet Letter. You know, I have to write a column for The Master Gardeners, and has a little item in there about poisonous plants I'm going to use. And that's my report. Representative reports. I did the Special Education Community Advisory Committee Meet.
We did on Monday, and that was the first meeting of the school year, and we received reports from Parents CAM. Parents got to learn about the CAC from the co-chairs, Amy Barberi and Darcy Storm, on their purpose, structure, and goals, and ideas that they would like to see implemented in their meetings, and how we can integrate some of more, some more inclusion activities in our schools. They're really looking for parents to participate in these meetings, so I, I'm hoping that, you know, some outreach efforts can go out and, and get more parents to participate because it really is a committee for them to voice whatever they feel like is needed. And that's it.
All right. And did the City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives meet?
We have not met.
City of Napa Liaison Reps?
We have not met.
Town of Yountville Liaison Reps?
We have not met.
And now the superintendent and executive staff reports.
Great, thank you, President Water, and good evening, NVUSD trustees and community at large. I'm excited to report this evening that the 2024-2025 Superintendent Parent and Teacher advisories have been launched since our last board meeting. I always appreciate meeting with these two key stakeholder groups for input, feedback, and ongoing communication. Our first parent meeting was on Zoom, and we enthusiastically shared our strategic vision and plan with our parent representatives, and their next meeting, which is in a couple weeks, will be at Alta Heights in person. Our first teacher advisory meeting was held at Alta Heights Elementary School, where 24 of our 26 representatives had an opportunity to tour the campus and learn about the recent interior modernization at the school. I want to thank the Alta Heights representative, who serves on the advisory, 4th and 5th grade combination teacher, Leslie Gracia, for hosting us and sharing with her colleagues from across the district how the modernized classroom spaces are positively impacting the daily teaching and learning at the school for the students. Remember, those students are our proud Gators. I also would like to share that the Instructional Support Services Division hosted a principals' meeting at Alta Heights, which also provided our site administrators with that same opportunity to tour the campus and experience how the transformation is impacting teaching and learning through the leadership lens of principals. And again, the transformation of the campus, the modernization efforts that were implemented at Alta Heights are ones that we hope to scale across the district, assuming revenues become available in the future. I also wanted to thank Principal James Brown for hosting Dr. Reddy and myself at Stonebridge School for our start-of-the-school-year visit. I always appreciate the opportunity to visit and learn more about the Waldorf Pedagogical Model in Action that the school implements with such a high degree of integrity. I know Dr. Reddy and myself were excited to chat with Stonebridge about the model, and we also chatted with the Stonebridge leadership team about how they are approaching interventions at the school during the upcoming year, given that at their charter school, they're also seeing the need to address some of the learning loss and gaps that emerged as a consequence of the COVID-19 pandemic. I also want to thank Bellwether Partners, an educational nonprofit and research firm that invited me to serve as a panelist at the EdTrust West Annual Equity Forum. I served on a panel to share with the audience of researchers, policymakers, advocacy groups on how superintendents and school boards can successfully navigate the challenges of declining enrollment and rightsizing their district. This is going to be a pertinent topic that, given that the majority of California public school systems are beginning to feel the impact of persisting declines due to the low birth rates and the population exodus occurring in our state. In fact, the researchers there shared that over 60% of our school districts are currently under-enrolled for the number of facilities that they have, and so we are for sure certain that the educational footprint of schools in California will need to be reduced over the course of the upcoming decades. I also want to recognize, NCOE, Napa County Office of Education trustee Cindy Beederman, trustee Beederman, served as the validator for the CSBA Golden Bell Board Award that NVUSD is potentially going to receive. This was the last phase of the award recognition and selection process, and she served as a validator and toured our, some of our secondary wellness centers, and so we want to thank her for that investment in time, of time, and keep your fingers crossed, hopefully we're selected for that important Golden Bell recognition, where the school board and the school district will be recognized at the December Annual Education Conference hosted by the California School Boards Association. Lastly, and unfortunately, you may have heard that there was a violent shooting today in our local community. You may be aware that the shooting took place today on Lincoln Avenue in Napa at the Napa Park Homes apartment complex. This is devastating to our local community. Our hearts go out to the victims and their families. This is an active, ongoing Napa Police Department, Napa Police Department investigation, and we ask those with questions specific to that investigation to reach out directly to NPD. I just want to take a moment to recognize that this is heartbreaking and can service surface many fears about safety in the community. We know a local tragedy like this can greatly impact the physical and mental well-being of our students, staff, and families, and we are prepared to provide them the resources to support them through that. So with that, that closes my superintendent report for this evening. I want everyone to know that we care deeply about our students, our staff, and families, and we remain, we remain very committed to the safety, the care, and education of our students in these difficult times, and we will provide any affected students and families with the support that they need. All right, so the assistant superintendents will now provide their supports, reports, and we will begin with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Grayden, and Dr. Masetti. The Human Resources Department hosted its first monthly Safety and Wellness Committee of the Year on Thursday, September 19th. This meeting convenes classified and certificated employees and managers to learn about and discuss safety and wellness issues and concerns related to district employees. One highlight was learning that our insurance claims are down this year compared to the same period last year. Johanna Navarro, Coordinator of Safety and Emergency Services, was introduced as a new member of the team. She provided information about the work she's doing to increase overall safety measures that benefit both students and staff across the district. This monthly meeting is open to all, and please contact Gina DeLuca if you're interested in attending one or more meetings. In alignment with Strategic Plan Initiative Theme Number Two, each month's All-Division Newsletter will be calling attention to specific Optum Employee Assistance Program resources to bring a greater awareness of health and wellness support available at no cost to all employees and their families. The September issue called attention to Talkspace, a resource that allows the user to contact a licensed therapist 24/7 by text. To access Talkspace, employees can download the Optum Assist mobile app from the App Store or Google Play and log in with our NVUSD access code, which is "wise." Finally, the annual NVUSD Employees of the Year nominations process opened today. All NVUSD employees were informed by email about the process and criteria required for nomination, which we are now aligning with our new Vision 2040 and Strategic Plan. Our communications team will help get the word out to our greater school community in the coming weeks. Individuals in all job classifications in NVUSD are open for nomination. Nominations may be submitted by employees, managers, administrators, students, parents, and community members until Friday, November 1st. The annual Employee of the Year presentation and celebration will take place in Evans Auditorium on Tuesday, January 28th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Page, and we always love that event. Your division does such a great job hosting it, so thank you for kicking off the process. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Dr. Reddy, who oversees the Instructional Support Services Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Grayden, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, and the Napa and American Canyon community. I'm pleased to provide an update on several strategic initiatives and efforts taking place across the Instructional Services Divisions and school sites that align with our NVUSD Vision 2040 and Strategic Plan goals. First and foremost, the Instructional Support Services team is focused on the early stages of building and aligning instructional framework that supports effective Tier One teaching and learning. At the core of this development are the principals, and this was evident during a recent principal learning session where we explored the role of leaders in the five steps of effective leadership as defined by Mike Schmoker. These steps sparked deep reflections on both the opportunities and challenges of leading with focus, ensuring our strategies prioritize effective teaching and learning every day in every classroom. The day concluded with a data protocol session where principal teams reflected on the most recent STAR assessment data, setting the stage for upcoming Professional Development Day. We're grateful for their dedication, reflective practice, and commitment to continuous improvement as leaders at our sites and in our district. On September 12th, the science teacher representatives from all NVUSD high schools convened to continue their work on prioritizing biology, chemistry, and physics standards. Building on prior efforts, the team focused on aligning these standards with the Earth and space sciences. Over the course of this school year, these teachers will work collaboratively to develop proficiency scales for these prioritized standards, which provide a clear framework for student learning, outlining levels of understanding from basic to advanced. By leveraging these tools, teachers will be able to more effectively assess student progress and differentiate instruction to meet the diverse needs of all learners. The focus on highly effective teaching and learning is for all students. This is evident as Coordinator Yasmin Rahimtula leads the implementation of TeachTown MetaPlay and Basics in our preschool special day classes. This curriculum supports students with significant needs, aligning with the TeachTown Encore program already used in our functional skills classrooms. By expanding the use of these research-based tools, we're enhancing the learning experiences for all our students who require specialized instructional strategies, ensuring that they have access to high-quality educational opportunities that promote their growth and development. One of our most important partners in this work are families. This past weekend, Executive Director Terry Lynn Resetti presented at the Parents CAM Partners in Education Conference, where 80 parents attended to learn more about eligibility for special education services and 504 plans. This presentation reflects our commitment to supporting families in navigating the complexities of educational services, fostering partnerships between school and parents. Last night, the D-LAC/ELAC cohort met for the first time this year. This cohort is, is composed of D-LAC and ELAC representatives from NVUSD school sites, who meet four times each year. The cohort meetings provide a more informal space for our families to discuss their needs and concerns specific to multilingual learners in NVUSD. The main purpose is to listen to families and identify areas of focus for ELAC and D-LAC this year. This supports our strategy focused on providing an inclusive and affirming space for families and identifying ways to eliminate barriers to our MLL's academic success. At our first cohort meeting, families learned about the purpose and their role in this advisory group. They were introduced to the Community Parent Liaison structure and how it supports students and families, as well as upcoming training for ELAC members provided by the California Association of Bilingual Educators. Cohort members shared common needs, including ongoing communication with families, support in the reclassification process, resources for academic support, and training in their ELAC role. We look forward to our cohort members sharing out at the first D-LAC meeting on October 2nd, which will take place at the newly-modernized Alta Heights Elementary School, and addressing these needs throughout the school year with our parent leaders. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Reddy. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees the Business and Operational Services Division.
The Business Office is busy working on processing the 24/25 compensation increase, providing ASB training, working on our annual audit, and working on a number of other critical time-sensitive issues. The enrollment team is celebrating a successful and smooth start to the school year. The team supported 250 new families who registered in the month of August. NVUSD is on track to exceed the projected enrollment figures on CowPads Day next week. While declining enrollment is still occurring, it is currently less than anticipated. With families settled and schools open, the team's attention has now shifted to preparing for open enrollment for the 25/26 school year. The open enrollment window will open on October 15th and close on November 30th. The team will work closely with the Communications Department, magnet programs, and school sites to promote the diverse school choices, options available to families within NVUSD. In Food Services, the Nosh team continues the fall season, which is filled with delicious items like roasted tri-color cauliflower, a variety of apples, and tomato soup. The team has been busy testing some new recipes for the The team has been busy testing some new recipes for the annual Thanksgiving feast, including a new quinoa harvest salad, cornbread, and a new turkey and gravy recipe. This time of year is packed with recipe testing for the next school year, since menus must be planned for about a year in advance. For Facilities and Improvement, in the last two weeks, we have held Citizen Bond Oversight Committee meetings for both Measure A2 and H. There was a great, there was great discussion and feedback from both committees. We appreciate their service and commitment to our successful bond programs. We've been reviewing playground pavement conditions throughout the district, and we're working to do replacement projects at various sites. This will improve this, both the safety and the look of our campuses. We have completed work at Brown's Valley, and we completed some work at Phillips today. So they're doing some of the pavement today, or the painting today, the final step. Our next stop is Pueblo Vista, so we're evaluating the site right now to see what work can be done there while school's in session. The temporary fencing at Canyon Oaks will come down this weekend. Students and staff will be able to enjoy new outdoor learning areas and lunch shelters. Work continues at Silverado Building E. While new HVAC is installed, we're also working to repaint and install new carpet. Construction at the Agricultural Technology Center continues. Footings and stem walls have been poured, and the slabs will follow. Maintenance and Operations is currently working pretty, very closely with Van Pelt and several of the asphalt projects and siding projects. So whenever we're doing construction projects, especially during the school day, staff, it's apart from maintenance, works very closely to ensure the safety of our students. So it's, it's a combination of both workers working out there at the same time. A lot of times what they'll do is like they'll put fencing out there, they'll move picnic tables, they'll do a variety of different things at the same time. They're also working to focus on some of our outstanding work orders, working on fit reports, getting ready to submit the fit reports for SARC in November. Also, Big Game is coming up, so we're working actively on Big Game. Another project they're working on is they're working to replace our fluorescent light bulbs with LED bulbs. We're planning and looking at one site to see how we can expand that district to, or site to site. The Data and Assessment Team continues to support sites as the school year settles down and gets into the routine. One of the main focuses continues to support sites, helping families complete data confirmation. As of today, approximately 95% of families have already completed this digital process of updating and confirming data contact information. The Technology Team continues to support our students and staff with all their technology needs. It has been a very busy start of the school year, but our techs have been working hard at our schools, closing approximately 2,500 tickets. In the Transportation Department, they'll be welcoming our new electric school buses in December. We look, we look forward to that. Our new trip drivers are also working out well. We're able to offer more cost-effective transportation to our high school athletic programs. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. President Water, that concludes staff reports for this evening.
Thank you. Next item is Facilities and Bond Program Update, and it sounds as if some of that was covered in.
Correct, it was covered.
Okay, so we can move on to Approval of Consent Agenda. And background information on these items is provided to the Board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of item is, or items, is requested by a Board member.
I'd like to pull Item I-5G and then move to approve the rest.
Okay, hang on. Which one do you, are you approving?
I-5G I would like to pull.
Okay. I-5G. Okay, great. Okay, so we have a motion from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Do we have any comments from the public on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, so do you want to talk about your item now?
Usually we vote first and then.
Okay, we'll do the roll call vote. Ms. Morales?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Cassian?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, and.
Excuse me, President Water, I'm sorry, we're going to need to redo that. We were notified, and I failed to notify you as the Secretary to the Board. And so, Ms. Morales, which was the item that the school site wanted pulled today?
Item I-5A.
Okay, so I-5A is being pulled by the school site. They need to go with another vendor, so for the record, let's pull that item, and I think we should redo the vote.
Yeah, we should.
So I'll move to approve absent Item I-5A, and I'm pulling I-5G for further discussion.
Okay, great. And the second from Trustee Hart, all right, so Executive Assistant Morales will have the roll call vote now.
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and Trustee Gracia, you wanted to pull the renewal agreement with Lexia Learning System for Lexia PowerUp?
I did. I pulled this item because I wanted to highlight something that we're doing here. We are testing this program and comparing it to our Read 180 Flex program to determine which has the greatest impact on middle school achievement. I like the way that we're using our data to test this program and see which one has greater benefits than the alternative, so I look forward to hearing about these results.
We all do.
So I'll move to approve that as well.
Second?
Second.
A motion by Trustee Gracia, a second by Trustee Hart, we need a roll call vote.
Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. And J, Presentations and Discussion Items, there are none. What? No. And K, Action Items, we need, let's see, one is General Services. A, Adoption of California School Board Association's Recommended Policy Updates, June 2024.
Yep, I'll move to approve, but I'd like some discussion.
Sure.
Second.
All right. A motion from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart.
Okay, we're going to discuss now?
Sure.
All right. So one of the things that came to my attention as I was reviewing this item was Board Policy 0420.41, which is related to charter school oversight. I was particularly interested in the part where the superintendent can assign someone to attend the board meeting of the charter school that you oversee. I think this is a wise course of action, as I have recently observed in COE doing just that with their own charter oversight responsibilities. And I'm interested in our superintendent assigning someone to attend the Stone Bridge Board Meetings to help strengthen our relationship with Stone Bridge. So that's something that I would be interested in seeing.
Great, thank you, Trustee Gracia. I appreciate you illuminating that in the policy packet that was brought forth, and I will, we do have some attendance at their board meetings. It's not consistent, regular attendance, so I'd be working with Dr. Ready and the leadership in the Instructional Services Division to discuss how we could utilize staff's time to do that.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, passes. Two, Business Services. A, Agreement with Binder, Malter, Harris, and Rome Banks LLP.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Gracia, second from, second from Trustee Hart, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. B, Local Agency User Agreement with US Bank?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Gracia, second from Trustee Hart, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Trustee Riley Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. Facility Improvement, okay, this is a resolution, we need a roll call vote. This is Resolution 25-06, American Canyon High School Paint Project.
President Water, I think we skipped Item 2C.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry. Good, because I love the title, Paint Project Futility. Okay, AB 1200, I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out. Slash 2756 for NVEA, NAPS, Management Confidential, and CSEA, very important.
Move to approve.
A motion by Trustee Gracia, a second by?
Second.
By Trustee Hart, do we have any public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comment, thank you. And Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
No abstention, no no's, and it passes unanimously. Now, we need a roll call vote for Resolution 25-06, American Canyon High School Paint Project Futility.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Motion from Trustee Gracia, second from Trustee Hart, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, no public comment, I believe we need a roll call vote.
Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. For Human Resources, A, Local Assignment Options for Teacher Assignments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart, do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. B, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators Revised?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart, do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. Memorandum of, okay, C is Memorandum of, wait a minute, B. Okay, sorry, C, Memorandum of Understanding-Dash Salary Increase for Fiscal Year 2024/2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Gracia made the motion, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, no abstain. D, Amendment to Employee Agreements for Executive Cabinet?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. And Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. Instructional Services, Facilities Use Agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Gracia made the motion, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
Excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, no abstention, passed unanimously. B, Agreement with Securely for Pass Corps?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, no abstentions, it's unanimous. C, Agreement with Lakeland Tours LLC, DBA World Strides for American Canyon High School?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, no abstention, unanimous. D, Agreement with Educational Performance Tours for Vintage High School?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Trustee, Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, no abstention, passes unanimously. E, Agreement with Lakeland Tours, otherwise known as World Strides for Vintage High School?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, no abstentions, no opposed, it's unanimous. E, excuse me, F, Ratification of Amended Agreement with Marin Health?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, no abstention, it's unanimous. Six, Operational Services, A, Request to Purchase New School Bus?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Hart, are there any public comments on this?
Yes, there is. Our first speaker is Gina Clark. Go ahead, Gina.
Hi, I would disagree with purchasing a new school bus, as it does not appear that the district is currently utilizing all of the school buses that we have available. If you look at school buses driving in the morning, you will see that there are many empty seats, and the qualifications for children to use the school bus are so stringent that we would be wasting money by purchasing a school bus until we can show that we have a need for it. I don't think that we need to purchase one. I see on there that part of that money would be reimbursed through a grant, but again, we are not utilizing all of the spaces available that we have for the school buses, and I don't see a need to purchase a new one.
Thank you for your comment. Student Trustee, are there any other comments?
There are no other public comments.
Oh, right here, right here. Yeah, sure.
I disagree to that. I would see this would benefit, it will help the traffic going on in American Canyon High School, and American Canyon Middle School, American Canyon Elementary School. This will help the traffic going on in every elementary school on our area, because we only have, we have a bunch of elementary school, and we have a middle school. If those kids from middle school, it worked for my son. I'm saying that it works, we don't have to drive all the way there. I have multiple children in different, different school. So it really helped, the school bus really does help, especially for the kids at transition. This will help for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposition and no abstention, it's unanimous. Okay, now it's informational, L, I, General Services. A, Curriculum and Student Support Committee, there is a report attached, are there any Are there any public comments on that report? Oh, do, does anyone, is there anyone with a public comment on the Curriculum and Student Support Committee report?
There is no, sorry, there's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. And B, Facilities and Technology Committee, there is a report attached. Are there any public comments to that report?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. And the Finance Committee Report is attached. Any public comments on that?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, and there is no report attached on policy? So, thank you. And Business Services Enrollment Report, do we have any public comments on that?
There is no public comment on this item.
All righty, thank you. Next is Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So on October 5th, I think American Canyon would welcome all of the trustees to go and eat through the Manila Munchies. It's a community event that is put on by the Philamam community. Sophie, there is one of the organizers.